Hi, thank you for tuning into another episode of the Live Better Connected Podcast by Mobile UK. And before we dive into this insightful discussion, be sure to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel to never miss an episode. Welcome everybody and welcome back to the Live Better Connected Podcast. I'm sure you thought it was a long time away, but we're back. And today I am super excited. We're going to be talking about digital strategies, local authorities and Wolverhampton City Council, and particularly their digital inclusion programme. So I've got some guests today. I've got Heather Clark and Julie Bentley. Hello both.
Hello.
Excellent. And so Heather and Julie, do you want to just quickly explain your roles within Wolverhampton City Council?
Yes, of course. So my name is Heather Clark. I'm the Head of City Economy and External Funding and also the Digital Coordinator for the council.
And I am Julie Bentley, Digital Programme Manager at the council, working on the five key priorities that are outlined in our digital wall strategy.
Excellent. And this is what we're going to get into, this digital strategy. And I like the digital wall strategy. And certainly digital Wolverhampton is something I keep hearing time and time again as one of the markers of best practice. But for our listeners, what is the digital Wolverhampton strategy? And how did it come about? How did you get there?
Well, I think we started off very from a position where we had quite strong, super fast broadband and we had even quite strong ultra fast broadband. But we had lower full fibre than many rural areas and there was no plans to commercially upgrade. So we really recognised the benefit of the digital, you know, future proof digital infrastructure brings to a city. And we wanted to do something about it. So we were successful at securing some local full fibre network funding to connect 170 public sector buildings across the city to full fibre. It was really important. And on the back of that, that actually removed the barrier for commercial rail out of full fibre in the city, which was really strong. But we also were committed to really making a marked difference around digital. So we appointed a senior level digital champion. I took the role as digital coordinator. And we also identified a specific cabinet member councillor to lead on digital. And from that, we've produced the digital Wolverhampton strategy, which outlined not only how we're going to improve digital infrastructure in the city, but also how we support our residents to get online because it's really important that people are not left behind. And also how we used innovation, digital to innovate delivery of services and improve quality of life.
This all sounds fascinating. And I must say, it strikes me as sort of Wolverhampton have taken this with both hands. They've really grappled with this and you've managed to get political support. I mean, what was, what was the reaction to sort of the, the political leaders within Wolverhampton Council when you came to them with, with this idea?
I think it was fully, there was full commitment. We had very senior level support. Our Executive Director of City Economy was our digital champion and the Chief Exec was on board, the leader was on board. So we had full commitment and everyone understood the benefit that digital could bring to the city.
It's important to outline as well that we provide annual reports to our senior leaders, political leaders as well on our achievements in terms of the strategy. So they're kept informed. It's not one of these strategies that sit on the top shelf and never looked at again.
But I just, it astounds me because it's just not something sometimes we find that level of acceptance and desire to change digital or even understanding. So it really seems that you've almost started from a slight jump start from everyone else because of that political buy-in.
Yeah, definitely. It has helped because we have that commitment. So we, one of our main commitments was to reduce barriers to the rollout. So we needed to get people from across the council bought in and to change approaches and to, in a way, changed, changed the culture of the city. So we fully having that senior level buy-in and also councillor buy-in enabled us to do things differently and adopt new approaches that supported the rollout of digital infrastructure.
And remind me, when did this all start? When was your first sort of appointment?
Well, the first digital Wolverhampton digital infrastructure strategy was adopted in 2020. But we started the journey probably back in 2018, when, when we developed the, the bid for local full fibre network. But I've been involved since I started in Wolverhampton, which was 12 years ago, with digital, this digital environment. But then because of the progress we made from the original digital infrastructure strategy, we then adopted the revised digital Wolverhampton strategy back in 2022. So we made such progress, we moved ahead. We had a revised strategy within two years.
And I think the, the length of time you've been working on this, for, for any of our listeners who might remember, Heather was part of our digital champion series we did back a few years ago. So digital inclusion is, is, is a big agenda item for, for this new, for, I wouldn't say new anymore, but the government at the moment. And similarly so for, for local authorities. And, and I think, yeah, we, we are expecting a digital inclusion strategy or something of that ilk. I mean, how is important is this for, for you as council?
It's crucially important, digital inclusion. We've been, it really sort of came to, we'd been working on digital inclusion for some time before. But when co-lockdown came about, we suddenly understood the sheer extent. And within Wolverhampton, it's not necessarily around the connectivity not existing. It's very much about the data poverty, the inability of our residents to, to afford devices and connectivity. So we've been proactively working with our network of over 80 trusted partners on several schemes to a device lending scheme and also a device recycling scheme aimed at children and young people. Because we understand not only the, the benefits to our residents of being online, the ability to improve their skills, find and get jobs, to access services, but also to the council. Because if our residents were online, then we can support more channel shift to improve the efficiency of our services. So we're very proactive in that area and we fully understand the huge benefit it brings to our residents and also service delivery.
And, and it is astounding when you think about it, what is now online and available online? And if you aren't part of that, what, what lack of opportunity you might have. And that, that seems to be a growing. I was astonished as someone told me that I think nearly 90% of all job opportunities are only available online. And, and you know, if you're looking and you need to find a job or you've, you are out of work, it's essential you have access to those online sort of job marketplaces.
And it's not just the people as well, the, the amount of younger people that didn't have their own devices. It cuts across different age groups. So it's as important that we address all those different communities and needs.
And not forgetting that all children were actually sharing devices, particularly when we had the COVID pandemic. They were having to receive their education virtually and online. And these children were having to share devices. So we're looking at that 100% inclusion.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it, there's some really interesting statistics that are starting to come out about access to the internet only, for instance, through mobile devices. And, and you know, it's a personal device. That's your access to the internet. That's your access. And in many ways, I've got young children, they're schooling, you know, their Google Classroom or Oak Academy or whatever it is, you know, they, they, they get all that through their device. And it's important to ensure that, that you have access to those opportunities and that education. And just beyond that, and just to look at the West Midlands digital roadmap, and that's something that's been done as we've seen, the West Midlands again, as, as a region has really moved forward on this. We know there's things like West Midlands 5G and Wolverhampton are obviously part of that. I mean, how does it all fit in with their, their roadmap and then your strategy into that?
Well, when we started the digital wall strategy, we made sure that all our priorities actually align with those that are outlined by the West Midlands digital roadmap. So for instance, the securing access to digital opportunities, that's, we saw that as our digital inclusion priority, ensuring that our residents and citizens and workers across the city had access to devices, connectivity, as well as data. And then there's the priority in the West Midlands digital roadmap that relates to sharing of data to improve lives. And I know that our adult social care service has been working quite closely with our integrated care boards and the NHS Trust on the cared shared record, which I believe is being embedded at the moment. So they've, they've looked at the better connected regions. And of course, we're building on our digital infrastructure strategy as well as the economic benefits. So we work quite closely with our enterprise team who have really good links with businesses across the city. And then finally, the using digital to build a fairer, greener and healthier region. So we decided that we would build a digital innovation priority, which focuses, as Heather's already mentioned, around improving lives, but also using technology to improve service delivery as well.
Brilliant. And a vital part of that obviously is getting the infrastructure out there. So how can, I'd be keen on your sort of approach to supporting the rollout of digital infrastructure, particularly sort of mobile and 5G. Because often it's one of those things, we hear the buzzwords, digital inclusion, digital poverty. And one thing I find is often that we sort of jump and race ahead and we forget that you need that physical infrastructure. Yeah, you need that signal. People have got to be able to connect. So how do you sort of, as a council, what's your role and how do you engage with the likes of the industry?
Well, in terms of 5G, we were very lucky to work very closely with West Midlands 5G because they brought in the expertise that we didn't have, the understanding of the code, the best practice that we could adopt locally. So we worked throughout this time really closely with WM 5G and they supported us to adopt simplified processes and standardised agreements. And we very much learned from best practice elsewhere. So we adapted the Greater London Authority's standardised rooftop and greenfield leases for, and made, and Wolverhamptonised them. We also made available our assets for use. So where there was a, a mobile coverage gap, we looked at what assets were available there and their appropriateness for use for telecoms.
And Heather, when we say assets, we, we mean buildings?
Yeah, buildings, all green spaces and also obviously highway assets as well. And linked to those highway assets, we also wanted to encourage pre-engagement discussions with planning, rather than have the situation where a mobile network operator would put in a planning application which would be rejected. We encouraged them to approach our planning and actually if that wasn't, if the, their proposed area wasn't going to be suitable, we would look at them and look at within that area, their search area, where would be suitable for a mask. So that's actually increased the, the, the planning success rate initially.
So as an example of that, there would be sort of, for instance, let's say, the mobile operators chose a specific site. You knew there might be some anti-support, people would protest to get it, object to it. You might be able to come back and say, well, actually, what about a town hall or a, a refugee centre, a civic centre that might be close by?
Yes. And because there are certain principles around, they wanted to minimise a sort of visual impact on the residents. So what we tend to, what they tended to do, look at areas which would have minimal, minimal impact on the residents, which would hopefully prevent there being complaints around the sightings and minimise complaints and make it.
How did you find the sort of reaction to industry? Because this, you know, my, my sort of experience as this is councils aren't necessarily as proactive as this. So it certainly sounds as a, a different way of working and that I'm hoping you're going to tell me that that, that has been beneficial.
Oh, definitely beneficial. I think because of our proactive approach, working with industry, the industry were more willing to work with us. So what we've seen through our proactive approach is we've now got the sort of best, if you look at the figures from across the West Midlands Combined Authority region, we got some of the best 5G coverage in this region. So I think that proactive approach really does help and people want to work with you if you seem to be proactive.
But it's not just about the mobile connectivity Gareth, it's also about the full fibre connectivity as well. So that broadband. So we've been, I think it was the second worst.
Well, we were the, we had the lowest full fibre in the West Midlands Combined Authority region at our starting point.
And now we're the second best within the West Midlands. And that is because we've got a collaborative approach with the telecoms providers. We meet with them on a regular basis to discuss any challenges and issues that we're coming across and to keep ourselves updated in terms of their rollout across the city.
And it sounds like a simple formula. Essentially, it's making it simpler to operate it. It's giving us a single point of contact. It adds consistency and in some ways certainty, because if we're going to have those discussions upfront, we're hoping to know that that will follow through into where the application goes. And obviously at the end of the day, you know, the application is the role of the council, but you know, it helps industry to work. And what'd be interesting is you say you were the lowest in fibre, you know, where are you now? And equally, how's things going on the mobile from?
Well, we're doing very well in, with sort of mobile coverage. I think the latest figures were 63% coverage for all operators of 5G and 100% coverage for at least one provider for 5G. And in terms of where we are with full fibre, as I said, our starting point was less than many rural areas. And we're now at 86% coverage of full fibre for the city and that's continuing to increase. So that's really, really positive. And that shows the benefit of that proactive approach and the importance of working with private, commercial and private sector providers to enable it to happen.
And you're saying sharing best practice is a big part of this and Mobile UK itself, we very much support and endorse digital champions. What's your reaction to sort of your results with other councils? Have you seen other councils come to Wolverhampton to learn from you and equally adopting those practices?
Yes, definitely. We've been, we, both at the West Midlands level, but also wider, we've been approached by councils from across the couns, across the country to share our experiences. And actually, we in turn learned from many councils and adapted the work they had done and introduced it to Wolverhampton. And that sharing of best practice is crucial to any areas that want to achieve.
Yeah, I think as well, we've been approached by several councils because they've seen our small cell agreement. Small cell agreements are there to enable smart nodes to be used on our highways furniture, so such as street lighting. So we do have numerous inquiries coming through about what our approach was, how we went about it. And as I say, that best practice is on the DCIT side.
And it's certainly an evolving network. You're mentioning small cells, aren't you? You know, the focus has always been on masks and things, you know, as we go into 5G and 5G standalone, as we go forward, all these types of structures can be important. And it's, it's worth, you know, the understanding for councils is that that evolving technology means it isn't static. So we will be moving towards, you know, 2G, 3G, 4G, 5G, 5G standalone. But equally, they bring new benefits. And I think what would be great to learn from, from you guys is what are the benefits that you're, you're reaping from this? You know, is Wolverhampton exploiting that connectivity? What's going on on the ground? What is all this infrastructure and connectivity bringing?
Well, with the improved connectivity, we're able to offer more enhanced public services. So I think we've already mentioned the fact that we can improve service delivery with the improved connectivity, but also improve quality of life. We've got a couple of projects that we're delivering at the moment, which align with our smart city, smart city concept, which is part of digital innovation, where we've procured 700 smart sensors that are being fitted on our public bins across the city. And these monitor the amount of litter that are in bins, which is enabling the service to become more efficient. So these smart sensors have data cards within them and they can identify and send the data back to our data dashboards. So that the environmental services will receive alert to say this bin needs emptying, rather than the operatives going round on a daily basis, visiting bins that might not necessarily need emptying. But also we've got, and we're working quite closely with WM 5G around the 5G Innovation Region Programme. So the West Midlands Combined Authority has actually secured funding from DCIT in which we're now starting to deliver our smart communities project, where we're delivering a tech-enabled care service for adult social care. So the use of sensors and devices, rather than a social care worker going out to a property that have that information available to them on dashboard so that they can remotely monitor that citizen's welfare. For businesses, the improved connectivity has enabled streamlined operations to improve productivity and also introducing new products and services such as online services.
And just, just on that, Julie, on, on some of that, I mean, you know, we're talking about rubbish, but rubbish in a positive manner. This is about productivity, knowing that these bins need to be collected before they're overflowing onto the streets. And equally, I imagine councillors are pretty happy about that. It's a cleaner place as well. And then just on, we always say, I like to say to people, people don't want to go to places where it's not connected. I mean, are you finding that having this additional connectivity, you mentioned businesses, are you seeing an uplift in, in investment in the area and businesses moving to the area?
Well, it is actually part of our investment Wolverhampton. Our connectivity is an integral part of, one of the elements that we are pushing to encourage investors into Wolverhampton. And it also is important when we talk about attracting residents as well and attracting businesses and growing key sectors, such as the creative tech sector. All of that is critical to growing our economy.
Yeah. And, and then you were going to come on Julie and on to the council part, because I particularly interested in that. You've mentioned a few things already, social care, you know, with something we're hearing from councils quite often is that actually, you know, this keeps people out of hospital, which is a huge cost to, to council. So from a council perspective, and when we're trying to talk to councils, say you need this connectivity, why, why is it important to councils as well?
I think it's, it's really a case of, it's important because I was going to touch, to touch on the cultural change for our employees and also our officers and leaders across the council. Because we need that support in place to enable them to deliver this new type of service that has technology embedded at the heart. So there's a big cultural change programme that's taking place. But we're actually looking at not only having a digital champion, but employee digital champions as well that can provide the support to those that are less, almost like susceptible or less likely to embed the change.
Yeah. And it's also probably worth mentioning that driven by digital is cross-cutting theme across our, our city, our plan, our council plan. But also any digital transformation is a key element of our future council. So how we, how we move our council, how we future-proof our council, how we improve delivery of services, how we improve quality of life. So it runs throughout what we do.
Brilliant. And I mean, we've talked about some of the positives here. I suppose always the, the point is, is this is not easy. So what are some of the challenges you're, you're experiencing?
Some of the challenges are addressing the locked out areas. We have locked out areas within the city, particularly the city centre.
And what's a locked out area Julie?
Locked out area means that they have no connectivity. So businesses might not have the full fibre and the 5G connectivity due to the cost that.
So what some other people might understand is not spots or areas of blackouts or well, blackouts in terms of connectivity.
And it's often due to the fact that it's the cost of connection. So it's, it's not commercially viable to roll out in those areas, which means that, and because we're an urban area and don't have access to national funding, they, without doing, you know, looking for a solution for those areas, those residents and those businesses are not going to benefit from the, you know, future-proofed digital infrastructure.
And is that something you're engaging with the industry and government about, these sort of additional sort of patches that are out there?
Yes, we have sort of positive working relationships with all, all three of the fixed next network providers in our area. And also in terms of mobile connectivity, there are some areas where it's very challenging finding a, a mask. And we haven't, we've, we've still got areas where we're, we're continuing to look at a solution to those areas to get them connected, where it's just challenging because there may be a conservation area, there may be a lack of council assets. But we continue to look at solutions and want to continue to work with commercial operators to look at solutions to ensure 100% fast it is covered.
I, I think we shouldn't miss out the challenges that we have with poles. So telecom poles that are being erected to enable overhead cabling for full fibre. We have received several complaints around the installation of poles, particularly in neighbourhoods where residents are rejecting a pole. They don't want it within their area. They don't want to be looking out their front windows and seeing a pole across the street from them. So it's a case of mimbing. And so we're working with telecoms providers as well as our local councillors to keep them informed around the full fibre benefits.
I was going to say, how do you engage in sort of pushing, well, explaining and educating about why that infrastructure is needed? Because I think it's always worth pointing out in, in these kind of forums that, you know, without that infrastructure, you either don't have those connections physically to those properties, or you don't have that mobile or coverage signal there. To have a signal, you need the, the physical behind it. And sometimes on a mobile side, often we've, it's, it's seen as a sort of magic signal that just is there. But no, there is physical infrastructure. And I wonder, how do you sort of build that sort of narrative to an education?
I think for us, we've, we've, it's taken some time, but we've come up with some standardised wording we can use that we send out when an objection is received. And it provides useful information as well as webpage links to allow individuals to gain more access, more information around why poles are essential. But we will engage with telecoms providers and support them in terms of trying to get the neighbour on board in terms of this rollout.
It's probably worth mentioning, we've had, we've had situations like that with masks. And actually the areas in terms of mobile connectivity that have poor recovery tend to be the areas where we have to continue to, to push the benefits to the residents. But that's where we, we can work with the councillors to try and get that message across.
And then do you find that a willing conversation with those councillors?
Um, yes, majority of the councillors, if we can put, if we can explain the benefits and they see the benefits to their residents. But yes, it's, there is, there are still challenges remaining. We haven't sorted them all out.
Well, there's always going to be challenges, but overall, do you see the sort of objections reducing? Do you see planning permissions happening or what's, what is the result?
Well, what we're finding now actually is because we probably targeted the easier areas in terms of masks, we're actually finding more challenging finding, you know, filling the gaps. Because it's just proving they're more challenging areas, residential, less assets. And we are struggling to find suitable areas. And the problem with some of these areas, if we could engage with. And the problem with some of these areas, if we could engage with other landowners, if the mobile operators could engage with other landowners, we could probably find a solution. But we are actually finding that some of the other landowners are reluctant to deal with telecoms companies. And that could make a perfect solution for how we can connect these areas.
But would you say this is potentially the exact reason why roles such as yours exist and are beneficial? Is because you can set up those discussions, you can bring to the light contacts between the, the industry, between the council, between these landowners. And actually then by the education process, we show the skills and knowledge you have, bring that discussion to light so that actually solutions can be found?
Yeah, I think that's an important part of our role. It's guys, sometimes some of those landowners, we might not have a strong relationship with, especially when they're national companies. So that would probably be the sort of the weakness. But if there's a way we could find a solution to how we can engage with national companies so we can actually fill those not-spots within our area, that would be something we'd want to work with the private sector on.
Well, this, I mean, this for me is exactly why, you know, one of the campaign points we are asking for is centrally funded digital champions to actually, you know, sit there and be on the ground, engage with all those parties to find solutions where they might not be considered previously. And equally, you know, we are looking for, you mentioned some of these areas are less economic than others. You know, we would like to see from this government particularly things like business rates holiday for new infrastructure. It's something that was already there for fixed infrastructure, but why is this not necessarily being moved to or pushed to, to mobile infrastructure? Especially with the changes in technology advances that we're seeing. So I, for me, these are exactly the reasons why these roles exist and it's why we support them. I mean, looking at, we've heard about where you're going and what you've been doing. But what's the future for Wolverhampton and the digital wall strategy?
I think, well, let's continue the work we've been doing. We'll try and, we'll try and sort of, our ambition is 100% digital Wolverhampton. We'd love to have 100% coverage of the city. That might be sort of challenging to address those last locked-out areas. But we'll continue to work with commercial providers and the key stakeholders to get to as close to that ambition as possible.
All right. Well, I think that's a, that's a laudable aim and certainly one, you know, is from hearing your passion and, and the skills and education and understanding that you bring to this. I think it's why, why it's so important. And then certainly I've valued that as well. So I mean, good luck in your, in your role, you know, we as the industry are very keen to hear and help where we can, you know. Let's see, good luck. And I think thank you for coming on the podcast and thank you for giving you your, our, your experience. Right. And that wraps up another insightful episode of the Live Better Connected podcast. Now, next month, we'll be exploring how the mobile industry is combating mobile fraud, a very serious issue. Now, we'll be joined by James Hallward from the mobile operator V M O Two. This is an episode you won't want to miss. Now, don't forget to subscribe to our YouTube channel for more engaging content and hit that notification bell so you never miss an episode. Now, you can also listen to us on Spotify and Apple Music. Just search for Mobile UK, Live Better Connected and follow us there. See you later.